Marbella.
Here.
McCarty.
Here.
Robards.
Here.
White.
Here.
And Brumel.
Here. Please stand for tonight's evocation and pledge. I'm pleased to be led by myself. Please bow your heads. Lord God, we give you thanks for your many abundant blessings upon us, and we thank you for the opportunity to meet this evening. We humbly ask that you be in our midst as we make decisions which we pray will be pleasing to you. May we engage each other with respect, faith, and reason. May we be willing to give up having our own way when your will and the greater good requires it. We ask you to pour forth your spirit of wisdom, knowledge, and understanding so that we might be truly wise in our decisions for the people of Winter Harbor. Open your eyes to all those in need, especially those most vulnerable. With Mother's Day upon us, we lift up to you all mothers and pray that society truly values and respects the great gift of motherhood. We may support them and promote the welfare of the family and society. With Mother's Day approaching or with Memorial Day approaching, we remember all those who have sacrificed so much in serving and protecting us, especially law enforcement in our local community. We ask you to reward and watch over them and their families. We also pray for a spirit of peace and understanding in the world. Change the hearts of those who would use violence so that instead they may turn towards respecting and caring for others. Finally, Almighty God, we humbly ask you to bless America in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic and the citizens of our nation under our umbrella indivisible, with liberty and justice
Right. First item, approval of the previous meeting minutes and in motion to approve the April 9th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? Roll call.
Target.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
Robards.
Aye.
White.
Aye. Motion carried. We move on to the second item. I need a motion to approve the April 16th, 2019 Regular Board Meeting Minutes. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Target.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
Robards.
Aye.
White.
Aye. Motion carried. We move on to old business, the first item. I need a motion to set aside the rules for the President and Board of Trustees to weigh the first and second readings of an ordinance of the village of Winter Harbor, Lake County, Illinois, terminating the designation of and dissolving the special tax allowance allocation for the Triangle redevelopment project area. So, second. Discussion, that's basically they're taking the small tip we have over on Seventh Street and terminating this. Any other questions? Anybody want to add on that? Okay. Roll call, please.
Target.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
Robards.
Aye.
White.
Aye. Motion carried. Second item. I need a motion to set aside the rules from the President and Board of Trustees to weigh the first and second readings of an ordinance of the village of Winter Harbor, Lake County, Illinois, approving a tax increment redevelopment plan and redevelopment project for the Sheridan Road redevelopment project area. So, second. Discussion, this is just approving the new TIP district, I believe, correct? Okay. Need a roll call.
Target.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
Robards.
Aye.
White.
Aye. Motion carried. Third item. I need a motion to set aside the rules for the President and Board of Trustees to weigh the first and second readings of an ordinance of the village of Winter Harbor, Lake County, Illinois, designating the Sheridan Road redevelopment project area pursuant to the tax increment allocation redevelopment tax. So, second. This is basically taking the new TIP, we're designating that new TIP, correct?
Correct.
Roll call.
Target.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
Robards.
Aye.
White.
Aye. Motion carried. We move on to the fourth item. I need a motion to set aside the rules for the President and Board of Trustees to weigh the first and second readings of an ordinance of the village of Winter Harbor, Lake County, Illinois, adopting tax increment allocation financing for the Sheridan Road Tax Increment Finance District. So, second. Okay. This is basically a discussion, this is adopting our new TIP district, correct?
This is the final ordinance.
Final. Final ordinance. It's remarkable always how you can get through discounted four minutes worth of votes. And it took, how many years did it take us to get this one together?
Couple of years.
Well, it worked well. Okay. Any other comments? Roll call.
Target.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
Robards.
Aye.
White.
Aye. Motion carried. We move on to all the bodies.
I need all three new trustees in front of me. I'll have you all stand here. Melvin.
There's four of them.
Three of them.
There's four more.
Don't have you. Oh. Oh, I know. I'm a little confused. Okay. You need to all raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm the wife.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the village trustee.
Of the village trustee.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
No. I didn't hold out.
You're up. You're up. You're up.
You're up. You're up. I would like to say that I'm really looking forward to working with the three trustees to have a successful board. Looking really forward to everybody and making this as strong a board as we have before and that's trying. Okay. That side looks better. We move on to Mayor. The first item is the resolution thanking Richard Robards for a lifetime dedication to the village of Winter Harbor. Dick.
It's funny to slide in and out.
All right. Now it's my turn.
Now, sure.
All right. A resolution thanking Richard Robards for a lifetime of dedication to the village of Winter Harbor. Whereas, one election day many years ago, Richard, Dick Robards was selected by the citizens of this village to serve them in the capacity of village trustee. And whereas, at that point in time, Dick had already served this community for a number of years as a member of the fire department, saving lives and property with great dedication. And whereas, at that point in time, Dick had no way of knowing that he would go on to serve as trustee for 20 years, making him one of the longest tenured public servants in village history. And whereas, at that point in time, Dick did not know that he would have the opportunity to weigh in on some of the most important issues facing our community, including but by no means submitted to the following. The successful resolution of the federal wiretapping lawsuit. The annexation of several neighborhoods into the village and the attendant growth in our population. The modernization of our public safety agencies. The successful lobbying of the Lake County Forest Preserve to improve Spring Bluff Forest Preserve and build a bird watching station within it. And the privatizing of the North Point Marina. And whereas, Dick's wise counsel was greatly appreciated by mayors for doing this one. He served and the trustees who served alongside him. And whereas, Dick has always shown a remarkable sense of humor and unfailing politeness toward all and particularly toward village staff. And whereas, those of us who have served for these many years with Dick do also appreciate that his love for the bagpipes never crossed into his work with the village board. And now, therefore being resolved by the village of Winter Harbor, Lake County, Illinois as follows. Section one, Richard Robards is thanked and honored for his many years of dedicated service to the community and for sharing his warmth with us all. And he is further recognized as a leading citizen for this village in perpetuity. Section two, the village clerk is directed to place this resolution within the permanent records of the village, standing as a continual reminder to us all to live giving lives of honor, honesty, integrity, and caring. And section three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. Congratulations.
I'm overwhelmed. I just want to say a couple of words and I told my wife I'd try not to cry. So, anyhow, first of all, I want to thank my family, especially my wife, Judy, for allowing me to do this because without her support, I wouldn't be here today. So, thank you, Judy. And my family who supported me throughout my years on the fire department and to everybody on the board, thank you. Thanks for putting up with me. And it's been a slice. Tim, thank you. Pat, Gee, Lisa, Chief Street, anyhow, thanks everybody for, that a citizen's tool for, I never ever thought that you'd actually elect me five times. So, thank you to you. Thanks.
Hey, Dick, one thing I'd like to add. Yes, when I became trustee in 2005, yes, sat right where Dana was sitting and you sat right where Alana was sitting. And I want to thank you because you took me under your wing and you always said, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. And I asked you very many, many, many times. I really appreciate that, you know, and it went a long way with you.
You're welcome.
I just need a motion to approve that resolution. So, second. All right. Roll call.
Target.
I don't know.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
And Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Excellent. Number two, swearing in of Jonathan Tripple, full-time police officer. Jonathan. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
Jonathan.
Having been appointed a police officer.
Having been appointed a police officer.
For the village of Winter Harbor.
For the village of Winter Harbor.
In Lake County, Illinois.
In Lake County, Illinois.
To solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of a patrol officer.
Patrol officer.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Richard. I just want to introduce John. John is the newest member of the department, but he's got a long history, John. You want to give a little kind of shout out? How long have you played? It's over 15 years. 15 years. John is an expert firearms instructor, brings a great amount of knowledge and experience in the department and gives us a good person to fill on our bench with experience. So, we're glad to have him and it's part of the new lateral transfer program that we've been using to hire new personnel. So, thanks, Sam. Thanks. Thank you, everyone.
Here we move on to the third item under Mayor's request, the 2019 Annual Appointment Resolution and the motion to approve. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Target.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to item number four. I need a motion to create the position of village administrator and to direct the village attorney to draft changes to the wage policy ordinance and village code to establish the office and its parameters. So, second. Any discussion on that? Okay. Roll call, please.
Target.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to item five. An emotion, an emotion to appoint Greg Jackson to the office of village administrator and to pay him $8,333.33 per month on an interim basis until the amendments to the wage policy ordinance and village code are drafted. So, discussion, I, you know, we all know that to Mr. Greg Jackson, we've worked with him for about two years and I know he's got some goals and initiatives for the village of Winter Harbor. I'd like to ask Greg to come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, staff, and residents of Winter Harbor. I thought in talking to the mayor earlier today, I would just do a brief introduction because many people, especially the public, might not necessarily know my background and skillset that I bring to the table for the position of village administrator. I did my first stint of public service in the United States Marine Corps. I spent time working as military police officer, attending national officers and leadership school. I'm a graduate of that class. And I spent a great deal of time detailed through all Marine Corps boxing teams. So, I spent time boxing, which probably intrigued a lot to my exceptional good looks. That being said, I went to the military because I wasn't sure I wanted to go to college. And sure enough, when I was discharged from the Marine Corps, I ended up going to college. I received 200 degrees in political science and masters in public administration and I am ADD for my PhD. So, I'm just finishing my final research for my doctor's in public policy. I have two academic appointments, one for 10 years at the Illinois Institute of Technology where I teach international graduate students, government administration, and public policy. And I have an appointment with Northeastern Illinois University where I also teach public policy and public administration. My career has taken me throughout the public sector and to the nonprofit sector. I worked as senior political staffer with Cook County Board. I then went on to be vice president of government relations for the information technology for Ampro Firm. Subsequently, I did some consulting with both in political consulting and government affairs. Finally, making my way as the chief administrative officer of Central Long Lake County and then the chief administrative officer of the municipality here in Lake County. Then I ended up as the chief executive officer of the Illinois Center for Violence Prevention, which was a hetero factor agency of the Illinois Violence Prevention Authority and the Illinois Attorney General's Office. Subsequent to that, I spent time doing my doctoral research where my focus has been on Illinois fiscal distress, a lot to study, and how predication of substate governments impacts that fiscal distress. During that time, I've been consulting. I've advised a number of mayors. I've advised a number of members of the state legislature and local units of government. So, that's my background for the citizens and the people who are not familiar with the background. Most of the board members and the staff are because we talked about this over the last two years back. In meeting with the trustees throughout the two-year tenure here, it's been brought to my attention that there are some needs from a government administration standpoint that they believe will help streamline the efficient and effective delivery of public goods and services. So, based on their suggestions and based on other things I've run across during my tenure here at Winter Harbor, I've been much with a list of initial objectives and goals. One of those, meet with the elected officials and make sure I'm firm and they understand the policy priorities of the body. Work with department heads to conduct a review of program priorities and needs assessments. Comprehensive financial assessment of revenue streams and debt tolerance, this has been a board priority as a result of the last budget. Work with finance director to develop a monthly financial analysis so that we can adjust spending where required based on internal and external economic activities. Trustee Wes spoke to that during the budget, during the budget meeting at six o'clock. Adjust the existing budget format so that it has a better narrative component to more expeditiously inform the public as to where the dollars are going in our general fund. Implement performance monitoring vehicle for capital improvement projects and identify departmental performance measures and improvement opportunities for cost savings that we could potentially reallocate to roads and infrastructure. We're going to reevaluate the job descriptions to ensure that they're relevant and current. Create job descriptions for positions lacking in the city and work through ICMA, ILCMA, the International City County Managers Association, the state branch for that, to begin data evaluation to do a comprehensive rate and compensation study and with other public sector employers and local government marketplace. Work with staff and residents to develop a parks and recreation strategic plan. Identify and pursue opportunities for intergovernmental resources funding and agreements to develop open space for recreational use. Conduct research on micro retail activities and opportunities as, micro retail activities as well as for the viability of winter harbor. That came from one of our board members. Work with the community development director to strengthen engagement and support with DNR and the Water and White Trail Initiatives. We've had to work diligently on that and our efforts with DNR as of late look to be bearing fruit. Meet with colleagues to identify new models, including P3s for road and infrastructure improvements. A lot of models have been out in local government, are based on private partnerships of road improvements and we're seeing good payback for those. Continue intergovernmental relationships with, to secure a rescue boat. I know Tony Robards would love to have seen that, but before it came off the door, we looked at another options, a number of options for funding. We're in discussions with the Illinois Conservation Police to potentially secure a boat. Continue to advance the idea in our, with the idea in our, the development resort hotel on North Carolina Marina. Develop an RFP for a comprehensive reserve study. Lobby on the head of the village and related legislation, regulation, and funding. Maintain our annual intergovernmental relations program with consideration, die, and LCM all priorities. Share, look for shared opportunities or opportunities for shared services with county government, other county government. And a couple of things that are really going to hit home, we need to address the board, with the board, the opportunities and challenges with the organization canvas in Illinois because it's complex, as well as potential expansion of gambling, both casino and terminal. And coordinate discussions with county regarding the new tourism. They have also been with board members. We began some discussions on Friday with members of the county board. So, that's the first week. So, those are some of our goals that we're looking at to hit as soon as we can start. We've had great success in the time I'm here, not as much as in some areas that I hoped, but still hopeful that some things are going to come to fruition. The mayor and I were asked to attend a senate subcommittee. We were one of five municipalities, only five municipalities, to present our infrastructure needs. We presented a $15 million plan as well as $500,000 for immediate funding.
For the next 30 years.
$15 million for the next 30 years. When I first came on board, I was asked the question, how much money did I think from a government fear perspective I could bring into account? And I said, I didn't want to over commit. It's hard to say what the state and the fed, what they're going to do. I did say, one of my objectives was to make sure when these funding opportunities came up, rather than us being down here on the list, that we were up here on the list. And we made it. I mean, we're being asked to attend committee hearings and meetings and make presentations where they didn't have. The congressman's toward the, toward the village for the first time. Our state legislators are actively engaged with us. Representative Jessel was in the past. We were fortunate enough to have that engagement continue. So, we've had some really, really big opportunities. The IDNR director, you have IDNR, it's coming up here the first week in June to tour. I've got a call with IDOT on Friday for the IDOT director to come up and tour. We've got some good opportunities in front of us.
Sure.
I've enjoyed working for this village. I've enjoyed the relationship that I've developed with the department heads and the employees and I want to thank you for the opportunity that's in front of you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Any questions for Greg Jackson?
I just want to say, you know, thank Greg for the work he's done the last two years on a part-time basis. I'm glad you mentioned those intergovernmental relations, you know, it's been great to see that. And I know that if it wasn't for you doing that, nobody would have that, that ability. We didn't have the capacity, you know, or the personnel to do that and to see, you know, all those relationships forming. Those are the seeds of everything we're trying to do. So, I really appreciate the work that you've done on a part-time basis and I believe you can do a lot more in this position.
I know in the 12 years that I've been on the board, this is the first time that we've seen any action coming from the state, from especially the DNR and also IDOT now, working with former representative Giselle and Mason. And so, when you see these things starting to come together and building relationships, I know the mayor, Greg, and Pat have gone to Springfield, I don't know how many times.
Four times.
To build these relationships.
Four times.
Four times, you know, to go down there, to talk to the politicians so it's, and now they're starting to come up here and they're starting to recognize us. This is the first time we've had anything like this happen. And it basically all started with Westreck too.
He did.
And they started listening to the things to Pat for that. You know, it's been a hard slog, you know, to get to this point. And I'm really appreciative of the fact that Greg, the mayor, Pat, and all of us together have gotten to this point now.
And I'll add too, I don't think without Greg as a government affairs person, this would have ever been possible. And I think he gave us 25 to 30 percent of your time, not even give us 100 percent of your time.
It's going to take a load off.
We're just move up the ladder even faster.
It'll take a load off.
Yes, it will. But I'll do anything, I'll go to Springfield and do anything that I have to, to Winter Harbor and top of the list instead of, I don't know. Yeah. Thank Pat and thank Greg for making that trip so many times to Springfield and Greg showing us around Springfield, getting in where we're not supposed to get into, you know. We had a lot of fun. We had a good time, so. So, with that, anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I do, actually. I would like to be binged at this time. Essentially, this needs to be more of a job interview and it needs to be more of a position created, not just kind of giving an extension as something that's already there. We need to fill or we need to create a position and have a true outline of what that position looks like. So, what happens after one year if he decides to leave? What happens to that position? What happens to that essential $100,000 annually?
I don't want to table it. I don't, I'm not going to table it. I just think that this is the right thing to do at the right time. I just think that this is the right thing to do at the right time. I mean, you're new coming on board, I understand that, but he's done a ton for the village already, and I think, I'm very sure that this is just going to get better in the works.
But first, was that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Well, then the next question, this is the second.
Okay, is there a second?
No question. Great, we can get into your discussion. Proletariat has to stop.
No, I answered all my tables. So we have a motion second. We have to take a roll call to see if...
Well, we have to discuss. Right. I think what I would say is, we've had basically two years of job interview with Greg. Right? He came on board, we said, this is what we need him to do in the capacity as a legislative liaison, essentially a lobbyist for us.
Exactly.
Right? We got two years to see his movements in the village, his understanding of where we're trying to get to. And now to bring him on full-time, I think continues addressing skill gaps and resource gaps that we have. For me, I don't take lightly the fact that we're creating a new position. Right? I mean, we have a small budget, we have a finite number of dollars to spend each year, but the majority of those dollars go towards immediate needs. And this, to me, is one where saying, we're going to carve out a little piece over here, kind of like we do with the TIP, you know, some of these things, this is a strategic decision to say, you know, we're taking the ideas he's already been working on, and we're going to pour gasoline in it. Right? We're going to try and accelerate some of these things by having him here full-time and continue working on these while also now having the capacity to take on some of these other priorities. So I would be in favor of going ahead and building some.
Okay. Dana?
Just, I agree. I feel with the work we've seen, I prepare to move forward.
Thank you.
I prepare to move forward, and I think during the course that we can't develop a position description at that time, too. But I think to lose any kind of momentum in where we're at right now would really, we would fail to keep moving towards that goal. I know in the past, we've spent monies here and there, and they have not been very successful upon and on. And so, and now we are at a point where we need to have extra revenue streams. I know as you saw when we first started this budget process, where we were sitting, and Lisa and I and the mayor were scratching our heads, what do we do now? And we finally, you know, I hope this is the last year that we have to go to this point and to this extreme to balance the budget and that we find other sources of revenue and the state help us to overcome this little hope that we have now. So, yeah, we need to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Don't, shouldn't we have a clear, concise outline of a job description before we fill the position? Instead of the other way around?
So the motion on the agenda is to approve it in the interim while wage policy and those types of things are updated.
Thank you.
Great.
What's the total cost above, yeah, we talked about that. What extra is it costing us for him to fill that?
Forty thousand.
Sixty, which is minimal.
Or sixty dollars.
For what he does, it's minimal to me. That's why I based my decision on it. For what he's going to provide, he's going to take a big load off Lisa. Lisa, right now, is trying to juggle handling all everybody else's problems while she's trying to be our finance director, which is not an easy task. The person that did it before her did a lot of that, and then we had a new person coming to do that. So it's been a changing environment here. And we brought this person in, and the things he's done and the doors he's opened for us, I think, worth a little bit of extra money we're going to spend. That's just my opinion. Took me a long time to think about that, and I don't like to spend money. But I think the opportunity that we're going to have with this gentleman is way bigger. We're getting a bargain because we could not hire a person with his talent for the money we're going to pay. Not at all, not anywhere. I mean, you can look at any other village, I've looked into a lot of them, my dad's cousin used to do it in Mundaline. You're just not going to get a guy with his qualifications for the dollar, if period. In my opinion.
Thank you, trustee Maravella. How about trustee Levin?
I like Greg a lot because of wealth and knowledge. Thing is, you know, I know this is coming at us right away, and I hate to act, because essentially, we're allowing what, what is he going to be doing compared to?
What he's spending.
Right.
He's going to continue to do what he's been doing.
Are we going to, what kind of expenses are we going to have on top of salary? I mean, he's going to be going to Springfield. Are we paying for that? Are we paying for, you know, a vehicle? You know, what kind of expenses are in that?
As long as I'm mayor, I'm driving my own way up on my own path, paying for the gas out of my own pocket. Now, if we spend a night down there, that might be included, yes. But right now, it's usually a day drive, down one day and back in seven days. That's just Springfield. Other expenses, you can answer. Anything else?
Roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call and tabling.
On the table.
So yes is in favor of tabling and no is?
The yes is in favor of tabling. And no is to continue the debate today.
The yes is in favor of tabling and no is to continue to approve. I need a roll call.
Hargit?
No.
Levin?
Uh, yes.
Maravella?
No.
McCarthy?
No.
White?
No.
And Whitmore?
Yes. Motion carried to continue, so now I need a motion to approve. Greg Jackson has the village intern, village minister.
Second.
Roll call?
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
No.
Maravella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
No.
Motion carried. So we move on to item number six. Proclamation for the annual VFW, oh, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Right in front of me, sorry. Proclamation, annual American Legion poppy sales. Okay, whereas the annual distribution of poppies by the American Legion of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. And whereas, poppies are assembled by disabled veterans and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas, the basic purpose of the annual distribution of poppies by the American Legion is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor and support veterans. Therefore, I, Dr. Michael Bruno, mayor of the village, want the harbor to urge, hereby urge, the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through your donation for poppies on May 17th and May 18th, 2019. The day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation, so the sacrifices of our honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a poppy as new evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens, dated the South Day of May, 2019. There we move on to clerk's correspondence.
I have something to add.
Oh. First name?
Well, this is for trustee Robert.
It's a one-way ticket out of town.
This is a token from us. We will miss you.
I'll miss you guys too.
We appreciate you. And this is for all the times that, when I said I had nothing, you went, hm. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Should I put it now?
You can. You're absolutely welcome.
Please do. I want to see what it is. Okay, I'll leave that paper pretty busy. All right, a beer mug. Get the smell. You got to tell Catali's got to fill that for the big raise. Oh, my gosh.
It's got writing on it.
What does it say? It's got writing on it. What does it say?
He needs new glasses.
Oh, here. Trustee Robards, thanks for 20 years of dedicated service. Thanks for bringing... Finances. Trustee White.
Thank you. I make a motion to reapprove a constable warrant, 2019-1, in the amount of $329,930.30. If you know, this is two months worth of warrants.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call?
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maravella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Motion carried.
I make a motion that we approve February 2019 treasurer's report.
Any discussion on the treasurer's report? Roll call?
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maravella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee White. We move on to your public work. Trustee Maravella.
I move to approve the request to hire Ryan Nelson, a position of parkhead, summer maintenance worker, paying only $10 a month.
Okay, discussion? Is this a one-part?
One, and he was waiting on the second because we haven't approved our, we told him that we could get two, so we moved to get...
Understand. Okay. Discussion on that. Anything else? Okay. Roll call?
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maravella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to public hearings. Just ask you to provide us with your name and your address. No one? There was also a glass. Yeah, name of the judge.
Justin doesn't want to add those in front of the last of the report. I'll meet you over at Harper Brewing.
You're not open tonight, Iowa.
Did the record reflect that he hasn't poured anything into the glass?
All right. So no public hearings, we move on to unfinished business. I'll start down with trustee Maravella.
Just so you know, we started our brand pickup. We had two four days. Tim Harper stresses them out just because it takes away from what we do otherwise on the village. I know it's harassment, but it's kind of serious. It takes away from his men being able to do things other than just that. So I know it's a benefit that we do. I know the residents like it, but there might come a point where we're going to have to decide if it's our best effort to do it. I'm not saying we have to act on it or do anything else. Something to keep a file. It does take away, and it makes this job harder, because now he's got three days that to do something, the guy instead of, you know, four o'clock. Other than that, baseball's in, we're all, we're traveling all over doing baseball. Just watch where we're driving, especially by my house, like there's little kids out in all time brackets, so it's really easy for them to dart in and out. Other than that, we cleaned up most of our patches, the rear watering breaks, so we patched and repaired stuff, and looking forward to the spring.
Yep, that's it. Thank you, trustee Maravella. Trustee Levin?
All I got is this Friday, from 7:00 to 9:00 is the teen dance for the middle grade. And then Friday, May 17th, is gym night for teenagers from fourth grade, and that's from 7:00 to 9:00 as well.
Thank you, trustee Levin. Trustee White?
Yes, I'm the senior now. I'm going to miss Robards, especially when his name gets called Robards, and then White, I see Julie Fanatic probably. So now I got to get used to this transition, but much luck in your retirement.
Thank you.
And going to miss you, old man.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee White. Trustee?
I don't have anything yet.
Trustee Hart?
Just congratulations to the newly-elected trustees and trustee Whitmore, so we're excited to have you. Excited for another year moving forward, and just been a privilege and honor to sit next to you, Dick, for the last six years. I mean, I know it's not as long as you, but I just appreciated having you next to me and just enjoy it.
Well, thank you. Thank you, trustee Hart.
Thank you to the board for the support for the TIP. I realize there have been a lot of meetings and discussions and very thick packets in your mailboxes over the last year or so. This is something we've talked about for a while, it's kind of against strategic priority to be able to have a financial mechanism to do the things that the community asked as we went through a comprehensive plan. So I know that we've had public hearings and joint review boards, and many of you probably also had a spike in calls and emails after the letters went out to everyone within the TIP district. So thank you for supporting that effort. Welcome to trustee Whitmore, and congratulations, Spritz. And trustee Robards, I had the exact same experience that the mayor had. I think as soon as I was seated up here, right away, he said, we got to grab coffee, and, you know, kind of laid out what to expect up here, and, you know, would remind me of these little cheat sheets on how to do revolution up here, and, you know, use those. And so it was a pleasure to serve with you, and I'm sure I'll still be hearing from you.
Yep.
That heart of service doesn't go away. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. I'd also say, you know, once again, thank you, Dick. God bless you, and, you know, good luck in retirement, and please don't be a stranger. Come on in to our vote board meetings. I have to keep the girls off their head, I'm a great granddaughter, so okay. I'd also like to congratulate the three new trustees, or three trustees, Buddy Hargit, Alana Whitmore, and Chris White. Also, I'd like to say that Alana will be over park recreation, voting and ground, and John will be over department. And also, I want to say that I will be absent the next vote board meeting, I'll be in route to Canada audition. So, guys, we'll have to nominate someone to sit here to run that meeting. And... Will they come back to that? Yeah, it was one of my favorite things. He was the intern there, yes.
No, you can't.
It seems we get lawyers involved.
My job is to say no.
And I'd also like to welcome Greg Jackson as our village minister, first time, first one ever, so glad I'm going to be serving or working with you to move the harbor forward. And also, as told by our votes clerk, I need to let everyone know that those are going to be cake of refreshments after this. So with that, I just need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you. I'm going to help my mayor psych it, Mike, and roll call.